I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Quincy City Council Meet on Tuesday, June 20, 2023 is now 6:30 p.m. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
President.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Li Yang.
President.
Counselor Mahoney.
President.
Counselor McCaskey.
President.
Counselor Phelan.
President.
President Dubana.
Present.
Nine members.
Nine members, we have a quorum. Please rise, please stand if you can, and if we could get a moment of silence and please use it as you wish. Turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, please.
Number 1, 2023-055, in order of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, compliance plan.
I'd like to bring up to the mic the Solicitor Jim Timmons. Mr. Timmons, you have the floor. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, good evening. In cooperation with your president, we've put on the agenda tonight a very brief presentation about Chapter 40A, Section 3A. You may recall back when this statute was passed and came online, we notified you of it. It's an MBTA communities law regarding zoning. And essentially because of Quincy being what's considered to be an MBTA community, we have to comply with the new regulation which is being implemented through the Department of Housing and Community Development. So what we're going to do is just briefly go through this presentation to give you further background in case you're asked questions over the course of the summer, because we intend to be back in front of you in September. So there's a cover panel, and this second panel, what is an MBTA community? Essentially, there are four types of communities. There's rapid transit commuter rail, there's what's called adjacent. An adjacent would be a community such as Randolph, which really doesn't have beyond some bus service. They don't have direct commuter rail access. And then there's adjacent small towns, and that's as you get further away from the MBTA transit infrastructure. Quincy happens to check the first two boxes, rapid transit and commuter rail. However, we're considered a rapid transit community, and the significance of that is that we have to have our plan submitted to DHCD by the end of this calendar year. The commuter rail communities have until December of '24, but we have to get our plan out and finalized by December of this year. So the plan we have is, there's been considerable work done already within the planning department, and our goal is to make this presentation tonight, have you understand what we're going to be doing over the summer, and we'll be back early in the fall for a final approval of the plan. The next panel talks about the basic requirements, and essentially what's going on is this. You now have to create a zoning district that allows multifamily uses as of right if you are near an MBTA service center like the stations we have here in Quincy. In Quincy Center, you're familiar with the downtown zoning we have, and that's not precisely as-of-right zoning. Anyone who wants to do something down at Quincy Center still has to get certificate of consistency review, and so that's something where the city retains control over the housing. What the goal here of Section 3A is, is that that sort of control is released a bit at least, and that you have certain as-of-right abilities if you're in the MBTA zoning district. The minimum density is 15 units per acre, and the zoning district has to be 50 acres. 50 acres is the size of, coincidentally, Boston Common, just to give you an idea. If you're familiar with the Common, that's precisely 50 acres. Fenway Park's like roughly eight acres. In Quincy, we have 5,000 to 7,000 square foot lots. One acre is roughly eight homes. It's 40,000 square feet. So you take eight homes on your typical Quincy street of 5,000 square feet, and that would be one acre. So 15 units per acre would be taking a little neighborhood like that, instead of eight homes being there, there'd be the capacity for 15 units. So while it sounds a bit onerous, it's not as bad as one might think, and if we, you know, if we do this properly, hopefully it's not going to have the type of impact that folks were talking about last year when the statute was first passed. We meet the other requirements in terms of transit orientation. We have the ability to do something within a half mile of a T station. Now, you're all familiar with the North Quincy development, I'm sure. That was a 2016 transit-oriented development done here in Quincy, and that was really way ahead of other communities in our area. The statute here was passed six years later. So North Quincy's already kind of implemented as a transit-oriented district. Counselor Phelan and others are familiar with what we're doing in Wallaston, taking a look at that, and there's going to be some work done in Wallaston. Quincy Center is all established and has been for a while, and in discussions with the mayor and with the planning department, we do not want to introduce any sort of 3A compliance in Quincy Center, because we don't want to give up the ability to control how things are developed there. So right now, we're looking down at the Quincy Adams T Station, that area. Now, Counselor Devine, Counselor Andronico, this is perhaps news to you, but we're looking. And part of what I'm here to tell you about tonight is that over the course of the summer, we're going to be looking at how things lay out down in that area and the possibility of proposing Section 3A compliance through a transit-oriented district down near the Quincy Adams T. If you go to the next panel, this is just a quick summary. We're a rapid transit community. We need to create a district that is at least 50 acres, and this term unit capacity, there's a little footnote there, but we didn't provide you with a footnote, not to obscure, but just because it's a little complicated. What they did is, to determine the unit capacity in the district, they took the number of housing units that were in the city as of 2020. The city's inventory in the year 2020, and in Quincy, that was roughly 47,000 housing units. So 25% of that is 11,700 approximately. So what DHCD is expecting of us is to create a district that would allow for an increase of 11,700 housing units, and that would result in our compliance. And the deadline there is December of 2023. The next panel I'm going to show you, it's a compliance model. I'm not going to review this with you tonight. I'm providing it to you in the event you care to take a look at, how DHCD is doing their estimation of what we need to do, and when we do submit, how they're going to analyze what we submit. So I'm just going to go right from that over to the next panel, which shows the area that we're looking at. We've drawn up basically a circle that's got a half-mile radius around the Quincy Center T Station, and you'll see that the focus is a bit away from Center Street because there's development there. It's on the east side of the tracks, and we're just going to take a look at that. We're going to ask counselors to indulge us, particularly Counselor Devine and Counselor Andronico, over the summer, and we'll be sharing information with you as we work on this. But this is the area that we're going to look at as a target for compliance. Go to the next panel. It just explains what as-of-right zoning means, and essentially, we retain the right to do site plan review, and that's an important feature of our current ordinance. There's a lot of misunderstanding about what site plan review is. It's not a permit. If you go through the site plan review process, it's not like you're getting a permit or a variance or anything like that. The planning department brings in outside parties to help review a site plan, and they tweak it a little to make it work better. So we can still do site plan review. Under our ordinance, we're supposed to complete site plan review within 90 days of the date it's submitted to the planning department. And I know that doesn't always work, but it will have to work here if we apply site plan review to 3A. So from the counselor perspective, as we move forward, there would still be an ability to have some control over how a plan, a project comes together through the site plan review process. But beyond that, again, there's limited ability to regulate. And if we go on to the next panel, the clarifications here, and this is important, the first bullet, 3A does not require that the housing be built. What it requires, the term they're using is, that we create a zoning district that removes barriers to the creation of housing. So this panel's very important. They're not compelling development of housing units. They're not compelling. If you look at the second bullet, our DPW director will be pleased to hear that the communities don't have to implement new infrastructure to accommodate future multifamily development. By way of example, if there were a particular neighborhood we were looking at and we knew that it just didn't have capacity for sewer and water and drain, we don't have to go in and tear up the street and install that capacity. It's just that on paper, the ability to create the housing in a district is there, and then as a project comes online, public works infrastructure would be implemented on a more direct basis. The last thing, I guess, that I would go to is on the next panel, where it says in the first line in the first bullet, "The goal is to remove zoning barriers." That's what this is about. So what we're looking to do is create a zoning district where as-of-right housing will be allowed near a T Station, and right now, we're looking at Quincy Adams T. So on the final panel, we're talking about next steps. That's what we're here about tonight. We're essentially looking for the council to understand and authorize work this summer by the planning department and others to develop this district, to present some real concrete data about it, and then come back in front of you in September. I believe we'll be ready by then. We're well along the way now with the analysis, and we have to present it to the council, which then holds hearings, analyzes it, and it has to be adopted by the city council as a zoning change before we could submit it to DHCD. So the submittal is now due. We have a deadline, a hard deadline, of December of '23. We're well along the way, and we expect to be in front of you in September upon your return to go over this particular district. So, Mr. President, that's essentially what I had tonight. I hope I fulfilled your goal that we make this informative but not too lengthy.
Solicitor Timmons, right on time. I'm going to open up to the councils for any questions or comments. I'd like to recognize Counselor Devine. Go right ahead.
Mr. Timmons, thank you very much for your time and this presentation. I understand that it's going to be mandated from the state. Is that what we're saying?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, you know, I see that this is going to be right on top of Ward 4, pretty much. I'm happy to see that the neighborhood, Liberty Street up all the way in between Center, going up to Southwest, is being left out of that red zone. Nice neighborhoods in there, so I'm happy to see that. But thank you for the presentation, and I'll review it, and I appreciate it.
Sure. We'll hopefully be seeing a bit of you over the summer.
Yeah.
Any other counselors? I'd like to recognize Counselor Andronico.
In developing the district and kind of finalizing what you'll at least present to the council in the fall, what will public input, the opportunities for public input be like during development, or are you looking for the city council to address that once the fall comes?
You're asking about public input?
I am.
Yeah. Well, the thought was to develop a little bit more of a concrete plan that would then be analyzed here with the council present. We think that's the most efficient way. One thing I was, you know, going to offer out was if you cared to have a meeting in the summer. We'll take you alphabetically, and Counselor Andronico will get first, gives it a hearing. But, you know, if you cared to have a hearing, you thought it were necessary, then we would do that during the summer. So it's flexible. Right. But the thought was to make sure that we, you know, we didn't open things up too much at the beginning and raise concern with folks about, look what's going to happen here, look what's going to happen, because, you know, we want to make sure we don't do that.
Understood. And did I hear right that we'll need to create, I think it's the capacity for 11,000 more units of multifamily housing within the city?
Yes, that's what they're saying. That's, and all rapid transit communities have to do that. It's, well, not 11,000, but 25% of your housing stock from 2020, because they're trying to promote growth and additional housing stock.
Right. And just a note, this is not for you, this is just my own personal view, just in my day job up at the State House. We've had a few municipalities call, and I share this similar concern and sentiment, is that, you know, it's nice to see multifamily by right, but as part of that, they're not including mixed-use developments as counting towards your multifamily zoning by right. So if you say that only in this area you can do mixed-use only, even though it'll have multifamily housing within that development, they will not count that towards your housing stock. And that has been a frustrating, at least to me, that's a frustrating viewpoint, by saying no, because you're saying, "We need to create 11,000 more, you know, units," except we're not going to create any places for these people to go for, you know, third places. If you're not at home, you're not at work, where are you supposed to go? What are you going to do? And they're saying you can't create those types of places, you know, within those specific communities. So that is a personal gripe of mine. It has nothing to do necessarily with how you'll develop the district and all that. We can make it by right as part of the overlay, but we'd also have to allow multifamily by right as part of that same overlay, so.
Right. I think, as I understand it, and maybe we can have this discussion again, what the mandate is, is to mandate housing as-of-right. You're correct that the mixed-use, a lot of communities came back with, "Well, if we're going to do this, we want to do mixed-use." We can't mandate that a project be mixed-use. However, if we keep our, if the ordinance we create is compliant with the 3A expectation, we could also encourage mixed-use in our zoning district.
Right.
Because you make an excellent point. That's as necessary as the housing itself.
Right. We want these people, you know, if these developments do happen, you know, years down the line, you know, I'd love for those folks to have something to do after they're, you know, done working from home or not necessarily have to take the T everywhere, and it can help reduce traffic if we encourage that in the first place. Anyway, appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Jim. So this is kind of crazy, right?
I'll respectfully decline answering that.
Well, yeah, and I know you're not representative of the state's interests, but was this a holdover from Baker administration?
Well, it was passed during the Baker administration, but it's, I think it's an initiative endorsed across the board. I know that then-Governor Baker was frustrated by, I actually talked to him once about it, and he explicitly named a community, and he said, you know, "They've got two commuter rail stations in the community and 30,000 acre zoning."
Yeah, and they're not absorbing any of the capacity, right?
Right, yeah. So, but that's been a complaint that's existed for a while, and while I understand what you are saying and your reaction to it, I think it is a problem around here, and it's got to be somehow addressed.
My reaction to it is more around the fact that we're talking about transit-oriented districts, and we do not have adequate public transportation to service the number of units that would be located on these parcels. So right now, we've got a huge problem, right? The entire metro Boston area is just jam-packed with cars, because nobody wants to use public transportation, right? So I don't know what recourse we have in terms of trying to make a deal, because this is absurd to be saying that we need to absorb over 10,000 units of housing on locations that are supposed to be more adequate to have people use public transportation, but that public transportation doesn't work. It's absurd. So I'm a little peeved here, because I just, I can't, I can't fathom this actually happening and/or people being pleased. I'm not going to be pleased with it until there's actually an adequate solution for public transit. So I'm more curious about what our recourse is, and I think there's something in here that you said we can apply for an exemption of some sort?
No, they actually say you cannot apply for exemptions.
Oh, even better. Cool. So there is no recourse to this. Got it.
But you raise an excellent point that I know I hadn't really thought about, but as you're speaking, like, I know our daughter goes in town every day, and she was taking the commuter rail in because the T didn't work.
Yeah, and that's a fortunate position, because not everyone can hop over here to the commuter rail to do that. And then when people don't have adequate access to public transit, they're hopping in Ubers, which then, again, increasingly jams the roads in the metro Boston area, which is why we're gridlocked all day long on the highway. So this is totally nuts. I just, I can't believe that we're having to absorb this. And at the same time, I'm looking at the state promoting economic development initiatives in the western part of the state, but what's the mandate for housing units out there, you know, to absorb some of that? Because I can guarantee people aren't going to be moving out there for any jobs, phantom or otherwise, that are created, so.
Yeah, you're pointing out, and it's an excellent point, the fundamental flaw here, the presumption that the availability of this rapid transit and commuter rail and that sort of infrastructure, well, it's only available if it works, and it doesn't.
Yeah.
So this makes this a mandate that's a difficult, that's a great point.
Yeah, it just sounds like we're not having a full discussion here.
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
About what truly matters and to make this thing work. So anyway, that's not directed at you, that's through you to anyone that's listening or cares to listen, but I thank you for your presentation tonight.
Sure.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Kane, I actually very much agree with you. Could I just ask, so for the Adams Station, is the 11,000 units that you're talking about, that's just in the Adams Station area, right?
Well, it would be in the zoning district, yes, yeah.
So what I'm saying is if there was development, you know, any more development that we have throughout the city that's along the spine of just any of the T stations, it wouldn't count to that 11,000 units, would it?
That's correct. It doesn't.
Yeah, and that's, and that's one of the things, because Quincy's already absorbed, like you already said, North Quincy before this came in. North Quincy is actually meeting a higher expectation in that area. Quincy's already developed tremendous amount of housing already, and to say that the state is saying that we have to have this and we have to do this, and we're picking, we're picking Adams Station because we want to keep control of Quincy Center, so we're going to jam potentially more development in Ward 4, Ward 2, and it's just basically saying that the zoning's there so people can sell their houses and people can, developers can come in and start developing, because that's pretty much what this will allow people to do, potentially. Correct?
Well, not really. The last panel, or the second-to-last panel, made the point about removing barriers to housing.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's important to understand that this is creating a zoning district that allows for this, and that the zoning district has to be large enough, and they've put it at 50 acres, so that that 11,000 number is potentially developable.
No, I understand.
But there's not a mandate that we do it.
No, but it creates, it creates a section of our city that becomes more aggressive for people, that if people want to come in and buy up those houses to develop, so they're going to start trying to buy up blocks of areas. But again, I'll push back on this in the sense that, you know, we, I'm a commuter, and the T has been terrible for a long time, and the state is saying that we have a mandate for this, and we have to say yes to these things. This is what it's sounding like, as Counselor Devine said, "Well, we kind of have to do this." But we don't kind of have, we can push back too, to the state and to our state delegation and say, "Wait, until the T actually fixes the problems that it has and our commuter rail and our MBTA starts working, we shouldn't be pushed to actually say yes to any of these things." And that's something that I would expect our city to do, because to say yes to something and say, "Yeah, we're going to start doing this overlay and get it all ready," when we don't have, we haven't pushed back and we're not, our expectations should be higher on, let's get this fixed first. I know what they're saying, they want, everything's being pushed for housing, but other communities around us have not actually met the needs of what we've already done here in Quincy. They just haven't. We have done a lot here in Quincy, and it should count as to some of the, some of the, some of the development we've already had done should count towards what we're doing at this point.
Well, I think you're kind of going down the 40B road, which was more of a mandate and more of a forced action by the state. This is not that. This is creation throughout, it's the MBTA community, so throughout the entire district, where what they're trying to do is eliminate, they're calling it barriers to housing. Greater Boston, we need more housing.
I understand.
So they want us to, they just want to eliminate the barriers, so.
Yeah, I think before we eliminate the barriers, we have to fix the problems, because we can't actually start building, because we're just going to have more people living in our community that can't get out of it and can't get onto the train and get to where they need to be. So you can build all you want to build, but if the trains aren't working, people are going to be on the roads, more frustration's going to happen, so how do we solve that problem? I just think it's, I think it's a bigger picture that we need to be all discussing, and I think it's something that communities should be pushing back on to say, you know, what is the solution here, and how long is it going to take? I understand the need for housing, but I also have to say that we have to actually have an understanding of when that's going to be fixed too. I mean, when you're going back five years ago, when we had all four stations being torn up, it was like, within three years, we'll have the, we'll have the, the, the trains fixed, so they'll be able to, they'll be able to move the trains along much faster, and it hasn't happened. We're still doing it right now. That's not, and that's not something that we can handle here in Quincy, but it's a fact that that's happening. So we have to work better with our state delegation and at the state level to find out where we stand on these things, because we're being jammed saying we have to have this done by 12, by the end of the year, this year, but we're not giving any guarantees as to when we're going to get the other piece back. So whether we create an overlay, the overlay creates another portion for developers to come in and start targeting houses, to start building those things, which is good for, it's good for the overall picture, but if we don't have our commuter piece figured out, our trains figured out, then all we're doing is creating more traffic and more jams in here in the city of Quincy, and we already can't move with the development that we already have. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Counselor Devine.
I know, I'm going to go back around first. I'm going to go back to Counselor Devine. You have the mic. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say clearly we'll be talking about this over the summer, but I wanted to disagree with you on the alphabetical list. I say we go for the new guy, or else Counselor Andronico, and I can wrestle for it.
Well, I don't want to put poor Counselor Andronico to that one. I've shaken your hand before. But I will say that- But I will say that, um, we had several joint hearings up at the Lincoln Hancock School.
Yeah, I would definitely, I wouldn't mind having both of us.
With your predecessors.
If both of us wanted to go at the same time. I was just kidding, obviously. I don't care who goes first, but if we go together, it might make it better. We can talk together.
I'm saying whatever you wish to do.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think Andronico, Counselor Andronico and I would be fine working together, yeah.
That's preferable to being beaten up, right? Sounds like your word, Counselor. Yeah.
That's it.
Any other counselors? Okay, procedurally, we have to get a, a motion to get a vote tonight on what you want to do. Um, motion made by Counselor Andronico, do you have a second? Seconded by, what's that? To have a vote on, procedurally, um, Solicitor Timmons, can you explain why we have to vote?
Yeah, we, you're just, um, moving to have the 3A team, um, the planning department and a few others, conduct further work over the summer and report back to the council on a, um, an ordinance change in the fall.
Okay, so just to do the work, no ordinance change?
That's correct. Well, we don't have the authority to do it. The executive branch, the authorities with the council, right?
Is this to go to ordinance first or just an outright vote? I just want to make sure I'm motioning for the correct.
It's just an outright vote. When we get, when we get back into September, I guess, when he comes back, that'll be procedural.
Then we'll put it back in?
Yes.
So that at that point?
This allows them to do the work over the summer.
Understood.
And then come back to us, the council, and present what they've got for some data.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to recognize Counselor Yang.
Thanks. So, the, the item itself just says order, you know, Section 3 compliance plan. So, we're voting on the plan to do more work over the summer, correct?
Right.
We're not voting a proposed plan, we're voting plans for next steps. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
How about, how, how would?
I just want to make sure because I think to Counselor Kane's point, like, that really got me, like, I might not be exhibiting it, but it really got me fired up, and I think he, it's, it's a bigger conversation, right?
I'd like to recognize Counselor, uh, Kane.
I'm all for the plan to move forward, but not.
If we want to do Storytime, I'm happy to read this, uh, order that's right in front of us. Because it clearly just says to take all steps necessary to develop the strategies, so.
That's the motion.
They're the senior ones, so I allow the both of them to speak, but, um, we got a motion made by Counselor Andronico. We have a second by Counselor Devine. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Falen.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative, motion carries, so you can do your work over the summer.
Well, thank you, thank you, Members of the Council.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2023-074, an appropriation for $6,835,751.03 for year-end transfers.
So, it's in front of you, counselors? I'd like to recognize Counselor Falen.
Um, are we going to get a presentation? I was, I, I would, this is year-end transfers, uh, we'll probably get a presentation, but I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Counselor, uh, Falen.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kane. Um, I will also allow you to speak if you'd like to, now that we had those two.
Thank you, Counselor President.
Go right ahead, um, Eric Mason.
I, I know this is fairly, uh, familiar work for the council. Um, this is our year-end transfers to clean up OR codes that were over budget, primarily related to, uh, the contract negotiations. Um, and then additionally, there were some overages in workers' compensation and FICA assessment that we're also moving to clear up.
Okay, counselors, we got a couns, uh, we got a motion made by Counselor, uh, Falen to approve, and a second by Counselor Kane. Any discussion on this motion? Um, I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
Could I just have an explanation for, um, for the FICA assessment? I, um, I was checking today, it looks like it's in a negative, um, $147,612. Is this $272,000 going to be enough to carry us through the end of the year?
Correct, Counselor, yes, it's going to be enough to carry us through the end of the year. We have one more FICA payment, I believe, that gets made, uh, next week.
You have one more what, FICA payment?
FICA payment, sorry.
Yeah, so that's going to carry through because it's a couple of different salaries that you have, you have paychecks that are going out, so it sounds like there's, the schools, the, so it's going to carry all the, all of them.
Correct, we have about, uh, thirty, uh, sorry, 4,200 remaining paychecks that would have to, that would be addressed in.
Okay, I just wanted to check because it, it, there's, there's no backup that comes with this, and when you're looking at these things, and I'm just checking with the auditor to see what the, what the status of these things are, it's hard to follow this. And then also in the departments, I know you just said, I think you just said it was, I couldn't quite hear you, contractual obligations and raises, is that what this is?
Yes, so it was primarily related to the, uh, contract negotiations, particularly in my department, it's also related to city leave buyback.
Okay, city leave buyback. And then last year, the way we treated it was, you did in the budget, you did a, in 2022, you did a 3% across the board, but this year, we didn't do the 3% across the board, that you're taking it out of this, the reserve for appropriation services, correct?
Correct, Counselor.
Okay, so, yeah, because your numbers were off from last year from when we did it. And then, um, for judgments and settlements, if we could just, if I could just understand, what's the $350,000 for judgments and settlements? Because I know that we have about 140K, that's, $40,000, I think that's been, um, that's been spent, and then another 190,000 that's been encumbered, so what's the $350,000 for that?
So, if you take the remaining balance of that, and for detail on what the settlement is, I would respectfully decline to Solicitor Timmons, uh, but there's a $500,000 judgment or settlement, I don't actually know in particular which one it is, um, but they need $500,000 to close out a, uh, settlement they have pending.
So, is there any chance that we could find out what those settlements are, just to, to share with the council?
Yeah.
So, I guess one of the things that it is, is it's, it's, um, the reason why I ask that is because it's, as the end-of-year transfers, they're just line items, so it's hard for us to track that back into the budget for transparency's sake. You can't really tell where this is coming from. We know it's coming from municipal finance and different things, but the judgment, settlement and FICA and the workman's compensation are just the areas that I was kind of focused on. And I thought he was here.
I did too, to be honest, Counselor.
That's okay.
The amount that's being requested as part of, um, what is before you, uh, the 300,000, that's an eminent domain matter, um, involving a property on Broad Street. We took the property, the property owner sued, and, uh, the matter was resolved through a mediation. So, that's what that amount is about.
So, the $350,000 was from an eminent domain taking?
Uh, well, it's, it's to pay, um, an eminent, a settlement of the eminent domain lawsuit, yes.
Okay, so that's the total of 350,000, it's not, it's not a combination of a couple of things, it's just that one thing?
Um, well, I believe so, yes.
It's a $500,000 total.
Total, yeah.
We had to move through.
You needed 350, yes, right. The, the 350 is going fully into that judgment.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor?
No.
Any other counselors? So, motion made to approve made by Counselor Falen, we have a seconded by Counselor Kane. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Falen.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2023-075, an appropriation for $1,500,000 for Water Enterprise Fund from Water Stabilization Fund.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Falen.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that this is approved.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Falen.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kane. Any discussion on this particular motion? Uh, I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
So, again, this is another one, I always like to ask, like, what's the balance or the estimate that we thought we were going to be getting in on this? And when I checked with the auditor today, um, we had to go to the A2 recap, could, could you, Mr. Mason, it hasn't been updated, so our reserves when it comes to our established, uh, established revenues for both water and sewer hasn't been updated since 2021 for immuno, I guess, immuno for this, and maybe Susan can explain this to me, but we had to go to, um, for DLS to be able to look at that? If you could. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why we, why we don't have, why we don't have a view into what we're, what we're seeing here to be able to make this transfer.
Okay, so, uh, Madam Auditor, if you take it or?
Well, basically, um, when I received a call from Counselor Mahoney today, she was asking me what the estimated revenues were, um, in the water, both the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Typically, in the past, the estimated revenues are posted immuno.
Okay.
So, when I went to look at the estimated revenues to explain to her that there was a revenue shortfall, I could not tell her what the estimated revenues were until I went to the DLS to the, um, the A2, and I had to print off the A2 to see what the estimated revenues are because they're not posted immuno.
I'm.
For water and for sewer.
I, I certainly believe you on that, but that's, that's interesting because when I've run my year-to-dates, I've seen it, so that may be.
Okay.
A control issue. I'll, I will check that, that's, that's strange.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm not, I wasn't, I wasn't seeing it, and I did not see it for 2021 either.
Yeah, that is strange. Um, the A2 numbers are, though, accurate, that's.
Correct, yeah.
That's what we use.
That's what I explained.
That's, that's strange.
Yeah, so I just wanted to point that out because it's, um, obviously, for our jobs, when we're trying to kind of review these things, I work through the auditor to do that, and, um, I don't think I have, um, I don't think we have the capabilities of looking at that A2 recap that's on DLS, that I know of.
It's, uh, it's, you, actually, you can look it up for any community anywhere.
Yeah, well, it shouldn't be the way that we have to go about doing that, I shouldn't have, I mean, yeah, so, so if we could take a look at that and find out what's happening there, because obviously the transparency issue of being able to discuss that, that's an issue, so, thank you very much.
Any other counselors? So, motion made by Counselor Falen to approve and seconded by Counselor Kane. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Falen.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2023-076, an appropriation for $1,200,000 to Sewer Enterprise Fund from Sewer Stabilization Fund.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Falen.
Yes, Counselor, this is a.
Transfer from the stabilization fund, and I would like to move passage on it.
A motion to approve made by Counselor Falen.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kane. Any discussion on this particular motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Falen.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative, motion carries. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number five, 2023-077, an appropriation for $51,900, I'm, excuse me, $793 to POCS Department Personal Services for Community Preservation Fund Administration.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Falen.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, this is money that is, comes from the Community Preservation Fund that's transferred in to the person running the community transfer, the, the Community Preservation Fund, so I move approval.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Falen, seconded by Counselor Kane. Any discussion on this motion? Um, Madam, um, I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
So, in this particular case, this appropriation is for the salary, I believe, is that for the, the person who does the community preservation work? And she's, and that person's role is in the, um, the general fund, is that correct? And this is an example of CPA funds that are being transferred in to our general fund to cover that salary, is that correct? And this is something that I brought up in regards to when we were doing the salary reviews, and I was talking about the DIF or OPER or all other places, and you said we didn't have to worry about that because it would be absorbed into those areas, but it is a way that we can do that for more transparency, so the taxpayers at home could actually understand who we pay and how many people we pay. Just wanted to point out that we do do it for some, so thank you very much.
Any other counselors? So, motion to approve made by Counselor Falen, seconded by Counselor Kane. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Falen.
Yes.
President Dubana.
Yes.
Nine members. President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number six, 2023-078, appropriation for 2,55,750 to Community Preservation Historic and Recreation Projects.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Falen.
Through you, Mr. President, this is money that was voted on by the Community Preservation Committee and that's been presented to us on the different projects, we all have a list. I would like to move, move passage on it.
Motion made by Counsel Falen to approve, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number seven, 2023-079, an appropriation for 900,000 to Traffic Parking Alarm and Lighting Personnel Services for Reserve for Appropriation Parking Receipts.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Falen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, this is the annual appropriation that comes in from parking receipts, that's a regular annual appropriation that is put back into the, the TPAL department, so I'd like to move passage on it.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Falen, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
Just a quick question on this, so this $900,000 that's coming, is this coming in just strictly from the Kilroy Garage?
No, Counsel, I believe includes the Kilroy Garage and all parking passes that the city...
Oh, parking passes. And with the Kilroy Garage, is there certain portions of the Kilroy where we're leased out to other developments that are happening? Is that, is that collected separately and paid into the DIF?
That's collected separately, not paid into the DIF. There's a pilot agreement with One Chestnut.
Okay.
That's part of the taxation plan, and I believe the other revenue, and I'd have to check this with, with TPAL, is categorized in the same way as into the Ross, they call it the Ross Garage Fund, that's how old the fund is.
Yeah.
But it, it comes in the parking receipts.
So that same parking lot that's over in the Ross, that, that's the, where you can pay over at Ross, we're collecting those fees, that's coming into this too?
To my understanding, yes.
Okay. And then what about the, the historic preservation that's next to the Adams Academy, that we bought those two properties, that was bought underneath the press, the preference that it was for historic preservation because the land was, you know, historic, that we're using for a parking lot right now? Are we collecting revenues from that?
If people are paying for it, I'm unsure of what the current agreement is, I would have to check with Adams Academy.
Well, there, the parking lot is filled every single day, and I guess through you to Mr. Walker, because it was bought through CPA monies, and it's filled with parking cars there all day, are we collecting, is that a revenue source for the city of Quincy?
I'd like to recognize Chief of Staff, Chris Walker, go ahead.
We'd have to look up exactly where that money is housed, Counsel, but yeah, we have to look at a small amount of revenue from that.
So this is just another example of, you know, we're, we're transferring money, and I'm asking this question just strictly because we're transferring it into the traffic parking and lighting alarm, we just, we just approved our budget, and we don't know where the money's coming, and you'll have to check, we just want to make sure I understood that. So, again, this is, this is concerning to me because this is something that we should be able to have quickly at our fingertips to be able to discuss this and share with the general public. Thank you very much.
Any other counselors? Motion made by Counsel Falen to approve, and then we got a second by Counsel Kane. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, 2023-080, an appropriation for 40,000 to the Quincy Historic Society, Tourism from Hotel Motel Tourism.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Falen.
Mr. President, this is from the, from the Hotel Motel Tax, transfer into the Quincy Historical Society for Tourism, and I'd like to move passage on it.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Falen, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number nine, 2023-081, an appropriation for 195,792.15 to the Tourism from Hotel Motel Tax Tourism.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Falen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, this is, this is come from the Hotel Motel Tax, and it goes to support the tourism and their initiatives here in the city, so I'd like to move, move approval on it.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Falen, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
So, not to beat a dead horse, but this is another offset that we're having into the general fund, just want to point that out, that we do have offsets through the general fund, and I'm going to continue to point those out, same thing with the last one and the next one too. Thank you.
So motion made by Counsel Falen, seconded by Counsel Kane. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 10, 2023-082, an appropriation for 1,660,000 to Quincy Public Schools and Quincy Access Television from Comcast.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Falen.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual appropriation, comes from Comcast, this supports the, the TV station both in the school department, over in Quincy High, and Quincy Access Television, who does a great job about showing all the public meetings, and on the school side, they do a great job showing the school committee and all the activities going on at our public schools, so I'd like to move passage on it.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Falen, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
Again, this is something I was just going to bring out, so, so again, this is, this is actually being appropriated over to the Quincy Public Schools and Quincy Access Television, correct? Okay. So there's four salaries that are being paid out of this, this Comcast money that are being paid for through the schools, but they're being charged or they're being grouped into the mayor's office, and the check is being processed through the mayor's office. So there's four people who are being paid out of this account that's being paid offset into the mayor's office, that's not in our general fund. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because this is one of the questions that I asked, and I believe that you said that for the salaries, that they would be getting the appropriate raises, and it would come out of this particular case, correct? Okay. So, and this is also going to Quincy Access Television, is that correct? So are the Quincy Access Television people also getting the same raises that were put into the budget? Are all people that are being paid out of this, this Comcast money being, are we?
Through you, the Quincy Access Television, they, they're a separate entity entirely. They get funding from this, but they don't operate under the same...
No, I understand that. I guess what I'm trying to say here is that it's not in our general fund, we don't know how much these people are getting paid, it's not clear, it's not clear and transparent how this is happening, and the, the four people that are appearing to be paid through the Quincy Public Schools, that's where they're being paid for, but they're actually working out of the mayor's office. So I just want to point that out because I'm not sure what they do for the Quincy Public Schools, maybe they do do stuff for the Quincy Public Schools, they're being, they're being housed, so underneath the premise that they're underneath the Quincy Public Schools, but they're, they're being grouped in their, and one of their titles, I think, is a director underneath the mayor's office, so I'm just pointing that out. Thank you very much.
Any other counselors? Motion made by Counsel Falen to approve, and then seconded by Counsel Kane. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 11, 2023-083, an appropriation for 400,000 to Park's Department Capital Expenditures for Tree Offset.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Falen.
Okay, this, thank you, Mr. President. This is from, this is from the Hotel Motel Tax, this is an offset that goes into the tree plantings around Quincy, and I'd like to move approval on it.
Motion made by Counsel Falen to approve, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 12, 2023-084, an appropriation for Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, setting the limits of what may be expended for fiscal year '24 from the Department of Revolving Accounts.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Falen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has become a, become a yearly event that comes in, it's basically, everyone has it in their things, you know, particularly where, where the funds come from and where they go, and, you know, all the way from the library to the, to the parks, to the recreation department, and so I would like to move passage on this.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Falen, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 13, 2023-085, an appropriation for 8,630,260 to stabilization account from free cash.
I'd like to recognize Counsel Falen.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in order to, to put, put this money into the stabilization fund, so I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Falen, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
I just want to clarify, is this, this is the free cash, and we took out about $10 million to artificially lower the taxes last, last year, correct?
From, from free cash, we took about 6.6 million. There were some other sources that were taken, some of their PO closures and such like that, but directly from free cash, I believe it was about 6.6 million.
I thought there was two areas that we took it from free cash for 10. I don't have the resolve in front of me, but I thought there was two areas. I know we took it from, we took, so we took it from free cash, and we took it from the pension obligation stabilization as well.
Yes, which is, which is a separate account, so I'm just talking from the free cash side.
So it was 19 million in total, can you remember where we took it from?
I would have to review, similarly, you would have to review the council orders.
Yeah, so, we're not, we're not putting anything back into the stabilization account, where's the stabilization account now?
This, this is the stabilization account.
No, I mean to the pension obligation stabilization.
Pension, so which one are you asking for?
I'm asking where we stand, so I know we have about $3 million currently in the stabilization account, our current stabilization account that we're putting this $8 million into, where do we stand for the pension obligation that we're supposed to be building up to $30 million?
So we have 5.93 million?
So last year, we took $5 million out and...
5.25, yes.
And we have built it back up to 5.
Yeah, we originally put, we had the year of the POB, we saved like 5.25 million that year.
Mm-hmm.
That was carried through a quite an interesting PO process over to the, the previous year, then that was deposited into the PSA, the pension stabilization account, then we used 5.25 million of it this year.
To artificially lower the taxes, and then we, but we're not putting any more into the pension, so we're just going to leave it at 5, where we have to build it up to 30.
Yeah, we, into FY '24, we have another 5.25 million.
Okay, but the goal is to put it into stabilization account, so our S and P will look good, so that we can borrow it again next year to artificially lower the taxes again. Thank you.
Motion made by Counsel Falen to approve and a seconded by Counsel Kane. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 14, 2023-086, order land, order taken, eminent domain of 119 parking way.
This, if I could, Counsel Falen, we'd like to refer this to Finance and Ordinance Committee, if I could.
Yeah, sounds good. Make a motion to refer, refer to Ordinance and Finance Committee.
Okay, we're going to refer this to Finance and Ordinance Committee, which is an eminent domain of 119 parking way. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
Clarify, so 119 parking way, is that the IHOP? Okay, so it's the IHOP, is that something, I thought we were taking that by friendly, friendly taking.
I'd like to recognize Chief of Staff, Chris Walker, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, exactly right, Counsel, you may remember that this was approved as purchase, as part of the last DIF program, we did DIF 4, this is process, whether or not we actually have moved forward in this way or a different way is, still remains to be seen, but this is the taking that will need to take place. Even if we get, we do a friendly sale, probably makes sense according to the lawyers and everyone to do it by taking anyways.
Okay. And who owns this property? Isn't that another one of our developers?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I believe it is owned by LBC.
Thank you. Cannibalizing against each other, great, thanks.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion to be referred to Finance and Ordinance Committee made by Counsel Falen, a seconded by Counsel McCarthy. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, that's going to be referred to Finance and Ordinance Committee. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 15, 2023-087, a gift for $1,250 from various donors.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Falen. President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, that concludes our agenda items, is that correct?
It does, thank you.
Thank you. Approval of previous mini minutes of June 12, 2023. Motion to approve made by Counsel Kane, seconded by Counsel Devine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, it is a vote. Communication reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk, do we have utilities?
We do. Utility request to refer to Public Works Committee for Scheduling and Advertising, easement from Verizon, utility easement, Broad Street, Field Street and C Street, Public Safety Headquarters, and a grant of location for Verizon for Hancock Street at Seville Ave.
Any other items from any of the communication reports, counselors? Seeing none, we're moving on. Unfinished business in proceeding meeting. Moving on, reports of committees. Any reports? We finished them up last meeting. Presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. I'd like to recognize Counsel Andronico.
Thank you. Unfortunately, over the weekend, one of my relatives, Lou Pasquale, had passed away. He was 96 years old. He grew up in Quincy, he worked in the fore of a shipyard when he was a teenager, before he moved on and joined the Army where he fought in World War II. Specifically, he was part of the operation for Okinawa, where he served as a private first class and machine gunner. After coming back, he started his own masonry business, which led to him working with the Phillips family and the properties in Dorchester, where he had a career overseeing operations at Boston Bowl, Phillips Candy House and the Freeport Tavern. And I think those that knew him the best knew that he was always looking to help our youth and looking to serve within his community, in particular with disabled veterans throughout America. So I just remember Lou, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors?
Just like to take a moment and say, this past Thursday, we had a ribbon cutting for the Father Bills in Ward 1, Counsel McCarthy's area. It was going to be, it's beautiful, absolutely beautiful. If you didn't get a chance, I know a lot of other counselors were there that day, it's going to be opening in late summer, early fall, but it's a beautiful facility, $26 million price tag, and they raised $10 million themselves. I'd like to also recognize our Affordable Housing Trust that put $1 million in for it, and it's got a lot of new things, 30 permanent housing units, 75 emergency shelter beds, it's going to have a lot of counseling in there. I know our counselor, Counsel McCarthy in Ward 1 was at the mic, and I was trying to get some clarification on something, he was talking about possibly a couple of the counselors wrestling in the parking lot, I thought it was one of the best quotes we've heard in a long time, but I was trying to get clarification, was it before the meeting, during the meeting, or after the meeting?
Oh.
Oh, okay. But it was a great day for the city, it was great, we had a lot of people with a lot of smiles on their faces, over 100 people came out, and just want to say, everybody that was involved in that project, kudos to everyone across the board, so it's a good thing for the city. It sparked plug McDonald's to do their revitalization, which will probably be open in July, right across the street, and then an intersection as we possibly can be talking about, so plus plus for everybody. Say kudos. Any other counselors? All right, motions, orders and resolutions. Scheduling committee meetings and public hearings. Counselors, will we reconvee, oh, go right ahead, Counsel Kane, I'd like to recognize Counsel Kane.
Sorry, this probably isn't in the right order, but I'm still going to mention anyway. Hope to see everyone this weekend at Porch Fest, we're having it Saturday, June 24th, from 3 to 9, three different parts of the city, Marymount, Squanum and Wallaston Hill, probably going to have over 100 acts at about 60 or 70 locations, looking like it's going to be a beautiful day, look forward to seeing you out there.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
You have your dog with you?
Probably not.
Okay. Any other counselors, so we're going to be, thank you for everything that you guys have done, we're finally at our last meeting, oh, Counsel Andronico, Counsel Devine, you may have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Counsel Kane, I gave you a Porch Fest plug on the Father Bill's picture, I hope you saw it online.
I did.
Thank you. So we'll be reconvening again here on September 11th, Monday, so everybody have a good, over the summer, and I got a motion to adjourn by Counsel Kane, I got a seconded by Counsel McCarthy, all those in favor, say aye. We are now adjourning at 7:36 PM.